Good morning, may I have your attention for the call of the Uvalde County Commissioners Court for Tuesday, October the 15th session. I would like you to stand and join us for the prayer. Lord Jesus, we pray that you fill our hearts with gratitude. Grant us the strength to face each and every day with courage and kindness. Guide our steps along the paths of love, understanding, and righteousness. Please bless our efforts with success and bless our thoughts and souls with peace. God, please bless America. Amen.
Amen. This is the flag of the United States of America. Under God, one and innocent.
Next item on the agenda is Consideration Act Upon Approval of Minutes. You don't have anyone that signed up to speak?
We're out of forms, but they were supposed to bring them up.
Do you have one?
They were supposed to bring them up, but we were out of blank forms.
Okay. Well, you're speaking on item, item number six, is that right? Yes, sir, you signed up right. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on the Citizens Communication? Okay, we'll move to item number three, and that's Consideration Act Upon Approval of Minutes. You have item, uh, Minutes from exception of the 23rd for consideration. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I may mostly go ahead and adopt this.
Commissioner Bates has made a motion to adopt as presented. Is there a second?
Our second judge.
Commissioner Parkes, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four is Consideration Act Upon Presentation of Our Major Medical Insurance, our agent of record. Joe Yads is here to tell us what we want to do. Joe?
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Uh, I'm gonna let Carter start us off, and then I'll wrap it up. Good.
Everyone, I'm Carter English with Higginbotham. I'm our chief business officer. Uh, we had the opportunity to partner with Joe, I guess it's almost been two years now, and so just wanted to make sure I introduce myself to you as well. Um, a little bit about Higginbotham, and I'll kind of tell you a little bit about why Joe picked us, but we're the largest agency in the state of Texas, based out of Fort Worth, independently held, privately owned company. Uh, we're in 19 states now with 4,000 employees, but the only thing that matters to you is that, uh, we're a values-driven company that cares deeply about serving the state of Texas, and particularly, uh, we serve a lot of the counties and independent school districts in the state, right, 80% of the school districts here. Um, but one of the things that I just wanted to touch on, if you go to, there's a blue diagram on that, uh, in that presentation before we get into the numbers of renewal, is just a little bit of the why Joe picked us, uh, and what our involvement is. Uh, Joe obviously is still the acting broker and the one that helps us in terms of negotiation and evaluating benefits, uh, and then the thing that Higginbotham does that's a little bit unique that your team is now engaged with is, uh, is that we have all these value-added services that we don't charge clients for. So the whole premise behind this and what's unique about us is that our belief is that we can accept smaller margin, uh, for greater service on behalf of ultimately your employees and, uh, the people that work here for the county. So, uh, a number of those things just include communications, uh, enrollment, online enrollment support, a whole team of professionals that are experts in each one of their individual fields, from compliance to technology, uh, to anything of the above, and so if there's ever anything that we can do to serve your people beyond what we do today, that's our greatest goal and hope that we do do that for you. So, uh, that's just a little bit about Higginbotham. Again, we feel very fortunate to now have Joe on the Higginbotham team as of a couple of years, uh, and so I'll hand it over to Joe, and Joe will get into the numbers of renewal unless he can ask questions.
Any questions with Commissioner English?
I have just a question or comment. Wellness, as far as, when we talk about wellness, is that like encouraging maybe employees to exercise, to walk, to...
100%. So, uh, we have an entire team of population health management consultants. Actually, the gal that's the head of that department, uh, started the wellness program at NASA, and we recruited her away from NASA. Uh, and so we don't charge any of our clients for any consulting with that team, and they'll be built custom programs that are everything from, you know, brown bag lunch and get your steps in and all that kind of stuff to as detailed as, uh, hey, this medication, is this the best medication you can get, and then have clinical analysis of those things. And so, uh, it's a little bit of all the above, it's the cultural feel-good stuff, and it's also the true client management.
So you, do you all update employees on that, or do they, the employee have to take the initiative to call you or call the...
No, sir, so that's actually one of the initiatives that we're working on internally these years, to have a true enrollment communications campaign around, here's all the things we can be doing for our health, especially those that are already free and value-added for employees.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions with Commissioner English? If not, Joe, thank Carter. Sorry to get you out of the office.
Before we get on to numbers, uh, I want to emphasize a couple of things, and that is that when I was looking to merger, I'm getting a little up in the years, and I felt that it was something I could bring to, uh, my clients was to merge with a larger agency, and almost everybody that I talked to offers something similar to these programs. They charge for every single thing. I mean, Cobra HIPAA, um, administration usually is a dollar fifty, $2 per employee per month to have that kind of a program. It's free here. All these, all the whole right-hand side here are, are HR programs that are available for, for your people if they have questions, concerns, because things are always changing when you talk about compliance. They're free. I mean, they don't charge for any of this, uh, any of this stuff, and then they've did, one of the things I love the most, they've got a toll-free number for your employees. Instead of calling myself, or Nora, or Josh, who we had in the past, we now have a, um, a group of people through a toll-free number. They're not offshore somewhere, they're a group of 20 people that are right in, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, um, that service our, our program. That usually costs money. So, uh, I really liked what I saw when I was looking for someone to merge with, and mainly because they had so much to bring to the table that they didn't charge for. They weren't trying to make extra money, uh, every, every time you turned around. So, anyway. Uh, next page is, is mine, I get to take credit for this, uh, for now, but really, uh, again, as a partnership with HIG, uh, HIG's got a lot of pull when it comes with some of these larger, uh, stop-loss carriers, and so we, we utilize that, sometimes not to change companies, but just to, to twist arms with our current carrier. Hey, you don't, you know, sharpen your pencil a little bit, we have other options now that, uh, that maybe we didn't have before. So, on this one, we're gonna jump around just a little bit, and we're gonna actually jump down to this year, the 2023-24, where we've annualized the data that we have to date. Of course, our year doesn't end until November 1st. So we've annualized the data that we've had, and you'll look right there on the far left-hand side, our stop-loss carrier is granular, and, um, we, uh, to date have paid $492,000 in premium, they have paid out $587,000 in claims. Now, if you remember, it's a self-insured program, but we buy a couple of insurance policies to protect us against large catastrophic-type claims. That's one of those coverages right there, is the individual stop-loss. Any individual claim that exceeds $45,000 is paid by the stop-loss carrier, and you can see, they've paid out more in claims than they've collected in premium. If you drop down that column all the way down to the bottom, that particular policy has really paid off benefits for us in the last five or six years. Carriers have collected 3.6 million in premium and have paid out almost $5 million in claims. So we've benefited by having these policies, these stop-loss carriers have not, um, and including this year. Now, going back up to the 23-24 year, um, we've had some large claims this year, so in that column, that 34-14 means that we've had 34 individual claims that is, that have exceeded 50% of our stop-loss. That's one of the things that they, they track. And we've had 14 claims that have exceeded the $45,000 stop-loss. So this year, we've had more claims that exceeded stop-loss than we have in any of the last six years. Uh, we've had, had a lot of large claims this year. Our fixed costs came in this year at, at 765,000. We've got the paid claims at 2.7. Uh, lasers cost us 29,000, dental 190, and vision 117. Employee contributions are up a little bit, that's mainly because the number of employees is up. Uh, we have not increased the employees' cost, uh, for the insurance this year, it's just the fact that we've got more numbers. So our total cost this year is at 3.5 million dollars, which is a 25% increase over last year, which at face value would look terrible. Anything over about a 10 to 12% increase is exceeding what the market does. The market's running anywhere from as low as eight to as high as 12% a year, uh, ongoing, and we're at 25%. Well, that's very misleading. You go back, last year, our costs were down 20%. So that's why I like to show you five or six years worth of data, because any one year may look really good, last year was minus 20%, or really bad, this year's a plus 25. So what's it really been looking like over a period of time? Well, the last three years, our costs are virtually flat. You go back to 2021, we had 3.5 million, this year, we have 3.5 million. So our costs over a three-year period are virtually flat. Again, this year looks bad because last year was so good. So let's even go further, let's go one, two, three, four, five, six years. If we average the last six years, our average increase per year over the last six years is 1.4%. Again, the best in the industry's running about 8% a year. So we've done really well. Um, and again, this is a perfect example of why I like to show multiple years instead of just one, uh, because it can be very misleading. So then what's next year gonna bring? Well, I take into consideration, on these 14 large claims this year, how many are ongoing? Is this something that's gonna be continuing? Are we gonna get back to that 10, 11, 12 large claimants which we've, uh, had the last four or five years? And, and the reality is, is that most of these large claims have resolved themselves, they're either a one-time thing, the employee doesn't work here anymore, so on and so forth. So I don't see that reoccurring, so I'm, I'm putting in what I think next year's going to be, it's just an estimate, and based on my estimate, I think we're gonna be about 6% under this year, next year, because so many of these large claimants are not gonna be reoccurring. And I, and so I put that pencil to the wit, and, and I think we're gonna be in really good shape, um, next year, certainly, um, no worse than this year, and again, this year is equal to where we were two years ago. So I think we're in good shape. I think things are, are settling back down and, and we should be, um, looking good again next year. So we're recommending to stay with the current stop-loss carrier, they gave us very fair renewal, uh, under the circumstances, and, um, and we're not recommending any other changes in the program.
Any questions, Judge?
Yes.
Could you mention the fact that our website, the portal on our website, and that portal, your staff, to...
Carter?
Large. Can you put it up? Can you put it up for me this week? We can't log in, I'm just on my personal.
Carter.
I was with Johnny Song with Frank Lance, and I think that's gonna be our trainees this week. But see where your staff can go in now to the employee portal? And obviously, they have to, you know, have the password to do it, which all of them do. And then you can see a Higginbotham icon.
Yep. So that, that, we can call that flow, though, that you can either click on, or it's a QR code, obviously, but inside of that, you obviously got access to all of their employee benefit information, all of the Higginbotham resources that exist for them now, uh, and then as well as you got a platform called Benefits in the Hand, that is an enrollment tool that, again, at any point they can access and understand, what are my monthly deductions? What am I signed up for? Nobody sees the plan documents? What's the phone number to call? Higginbotham, again, any of those things. Um, so, so we built this in conjunction with the Captain and Commissioner's employees that have those things, I think.
And I went in and did it the other day, and you do call them personal, and like you do call your medical portals, and I needed a claim form, got my claim form off, turned it in, and sent it to the doctor by media. It's really very functional. And Johnny gets to know his personnel, gets to know the sort of accusations, is that right?
Correct. So employee has an activation, or just say, oh, I got married, and I need to make a change now, it's my insurance, I have a child, whatever, then it alerts Johnny, and then Johnny confirms that's correct, and then allows that and all of her, um, any of your...
So Joe...
Yeah, this is something, again, I've, I've looked around over the years at these online enrollment, uh, portals, and most of these agencies like to charge $4 to $5 per employee per month for this benefit, and, and Higginbotham absorbs that cost. Uh, it's something that we've rolled out very slowly because we don't want it to be a situation where we have employees who, um, aren't comfortable doing everything online. Uh, I'm kind of one of those people, but, um, so, you know, it's one of those things where we can use it, and we are, and it, we're getting more utilization out of it this year than we did last year, and I think as, as the years go by, we'll get more and more people utilizing that online enrollment, where they can do everything online, and then it dumps right into the system for the counties, so it's automatically now, on the county system, they don't have to hand implement all the, the changes in enrollments, and, and then it also notifies the carriers automatically. So everything really works to help alleviate some of the headaches that, that your staff currently has to, to deal with.
Just clarification, uh, for my, for my sake, uh, under carrier versus, premium versus claims, granular, 492,000...
Yes.
And then claims, 587. Can you, could just, for me, can you touch on that again?
Sure, okay, so we, we purchased two insurance policies to protect us, even though we're self-insured. One of those policies is an individual stop-loss. An individual stop-loss says that we're purchasing an insurance policy that says any individual who has claims that exceed $45,000...
Gotcha.
The county stops paying the claims, but it's an individual, and the stop-loss pays for the rest of the year, that, that starts all over every November 1st. So that particular number that you're looking at, we have paid $492,000 in premium for that coverage, but they have paid out $587,000 in claims, that we've had 587,000 claims, dollars in claims that exceeded the $45,000 limits. Um, you know, last year, if you go back last year, it was even worse. Granular collected 427 in, in premium and paid out 893 in claims. You have to go back to 2021 to find out where the stop-loss carrier actually made money, 750,000 in premium and only 449 in claims. So that's just the claims-loss ratio that we have for that individ, that's, that little particular policy, that's the individual stop-loss.
And is there a correlation with more employees, there's gonna be more claims?
Sure, of course, you know, again, you've got that stop-loss limit of $45,000. If we only had, uh, 100 employees here, um, you might expect, you know, six or seven claims to exceed that amount. Now that we're pushing 200 employees in the plan, uh, the number of people exceeding 45,000 is gonna go up, but so does the premium, and, you know, uh, these carriers ideally are trying to zero in on a, on a premium that, that'll make them money without, uh, chasing us away. So that's why, you know, we're not looking at our rates for that coverage doubling this year, because they lost money two years ago. If they try to increase our rates too much, we just go somewhere else. Um, and so they look at the individuals just like I did, and said, all right, you know, most of these are not reoccurring, we don't need to double our premium to break even next year, we only need, you know, a 10 or 15% increase in the premium, where we should be fine. So, um, if they want to keep the business, they, they can't try to recoup losses.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Judge?
Is there gonna be an increase in the premium for the employees, or is it staying the same?
Well, we're recommending no change.
Okay.
We don't, we don't feel we need to. When you look at our, I mean, our costs are, have only increased about 1, 1.4% on average over the last six years, there's no need to try to ask the employees to, to put more into the pot. The plan's doing really well.
Further questions? You heard the explanation by Higginbotham, uh, is there a motion to accept the plan and the renewal?
I don't think so.
Motion by Commissioner Parkes and second by Commissioner Bates. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number five, and that's Consideration Act Upon A New Subdivision Plaided By Waltham State's Entity Number Three. I don't see Mr. Duxton here to make that presentation, so we'll, we'll reschedule this for another meeting. Item number six is Consideration Act Upon Nominating Two Directors For The Uvalde County Appraisal District. Uvalde County Appraisal District has two positions coming back in, in the year. The process of filling those vacancies calls for each of the entities to nominate individuals to serve, and when the nominations are complete, each entity will have an opportunity to cast votes. So the court has been requested today to nominate individuals, uh, to serve on the appraisal district board. We do have Rosenberg Risa who would like to address the board of the court.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Mitchell.
Good morning.
Commissioner. I am here to resubmit my name for the UCAT Board of Directors. As you know, I'm serving there, and, uh, I would like to continue to do that. I know we have, uh, some, uh, problems there, you know, but, uh, we're working through them, and, uh, so I want to continue being there to assist with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I want to make sure you understand, the process is that we're gonna nominate people today, we can nominate as many as we'd like. UCAT will create a ballot, will come back to us with a ballot with the number of votes that Greg and Cass for that election, so nominate as many as you'd like, for today's.
I'd like to nominate Stephen McNew.
Stephen McNew.
Judge, I'd like to nominate Rosenberg Risa.
Rosenberg Risa.
And Mr. Vicente Gonzalez III, who has indicated to me that he's still watching to observe.
Vicente Gonzalez III. Any others? Okay, so we have nominations of Rosenberg Risa, Stephen McNew, and Vicente Gonzalez III. Is there a motion to present those nominations to the UCAT?
Judge, I'd like to make the motion to nominate Rosenberg Risa and Vicente Gonzalez.
Have the motion, just those two?
Just those two, cast all our votes for those two individuals.
Have a motion by Commissioner Garza to nominate only Rosenberg Risa and Vicente Gonzalez III. Is there a second to that motion?
If we do the two or the three, we just, when we cast our ballots, we divide, we can divide it by three, two, one.
You can nominate as many as you want, and then when the ballot is presented back to us, then we cast the number of votes out.
Okay.
So is there a second to that motion? Here's no second to the motion, I was about to say. Commissioner, secondary motion.
I'd like to nominate all of them.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bates to nominate all three individuals. Is there a second to that? Second by Commissioner Eagle. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I will present those three names to UCAT for the ballot construction. We'll move to item number seven, and that's Consideration Act Upon A Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 22. Alice?
As you may recall, um, last year, or in the 88th legislature, uh, there was a grant program called Senate Bill 22 established, and it has run one year. It began, um, October of last year. We implemented it January 2024. I'm now bringing to you the new resolution for the year 10/1/24/9/30/25. The new resolution is, uh, support of the grant, there are no funds required in the way we adopted our resolution by the county. We, uh, and I assume the court had still wanted to do it that way. I did provide you, um, thanks to, um, each of the officials you see there, the district attorney was allotted, excuse me, 175,000, the county attorney, 175,000, your sheriff's department is split into jail and, um, the sheriff, and, uh, there's, if I remember correctly, is a total of 350,000. I went ahead and gave you the detail, this is already in your adopted budget, which, uh, we weren't fortunate enough to do that last year. However, we do need the resolution. I recommend the court adopt the resolution in support of Senate.
First, I'll just bounce it out, Senate Bill 22 resolution.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead and adopt.
Second, Judge. Judge has motion to adopt the resolution as presented, is there a second? Second. Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight is Consideration Act Upon Water Beds, the county advertised for, and received beds for the elevator modification, the county morgue, and rental property located at US 83 and County Road 350. We do have two individuals who would like to address the court regarding this item. Taylor Massey, you have three minutes.
My name is Taylor Massey, and I have the privilege of serving as the managing funeral director and embalmer at Russian Essesnol's Mortuary, as well as being a Uvalde County resident for over 25 years. It has been our honor to provide essential services to the people of Uvalde County during their most difficult times. We respectfully request the court's consideration in allowing us to continue to serve as the Uvalde County morgue. Our team comprises of two funeral assistants, as well as four locally duly licensed funeral directors and embalmers, who possess extensive knowledge in both legal and procedural aspects of our profession, as well as deep connections with our local law enforcement and the Border Patrol's Missing Migrant Program. We are committed to providing round-the-clock availability to ensure the needs of our community are always met. We appreciate the opportunity to present our case and remain confident in our ability to continue serving the people of Uvalde County with the utmost professionalism and compassion. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. We have another speaker, Judy Maler.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, ladies, ladies. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and speak to y'all. I, I've been a licensed funeral director for 33 years, I've lived, I've been with you all, all my life, and, uh, we want us to see if y'all can recommend us, if y'all consider us to, to continue being, serving Uvalde, Uvalde County as a county morgue. Our facility does hold, uh, we do have spaces for 11 deceased loved ones that we can hold at one time. We do have four vehicles where we can transport if needed, five to six individuals at one time, and usually our estimated time on a, on a call is 15 to 20, 30 minutes, because we're all local, so it's just something that y'all can consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, now, look, look for all the speakers for this morning. We do have beds for the elevator, we received one bed for the elevator modification from TKB for 175,000, $295, 91%. We do have that budget for this coming year, and it's recommended that you award the bed to TKB. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we award the bed and for them not to start till after January.
And they're, and that's in the, and that's in the contract that they not start till after January.
And start in January.
Our second judge. Have a motion by Commissioner Bates, a second by Commissioner... Commissioner Parkes, discussion.
Judge, just a question, uh... Judge, just a question. So we lumped the elevator and the county morgue, and they're all in, are we going to take three separate motions?
We're going to take three separate.
Gotcha.
Three separate motions.
I'll second.
Or got a second.
Okay.
Further discussion on the elevator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll take the county morgue. We received two bids, one from Hillcrest at $0, and one from Rush Nessus Knowles at $0. Is there a motion to award that bid?
Judge, just a quick question. Right now, it's Rush Nessus. How does that work? Do we go kind of back and forth on that, or?
We did it on a bid basis. This current year, Rush Nessus Knowles had it, has it. I believe they had it the year before, if I'm not mistaken. There's no set policy on it. We just, on each of the bids, basically, both of them are zero.
And both bids are the same. Nothing distinguishes one from the other. Personally, I kind of like to see, kind of share in the, I guess, in the wealth, for lack of a better word.
Business.
Business, thank you. So I know Rush Nessus has had it for, I guess, two years now, and so I kind of like to see Hillcrest awarded the bid this year. And I'd like to make a motion, yes.
Have a motion to award it to Hillcrest. Commissioner Garza, is there a second?
And this will be kind of like a rotation-type deal, depending on what they've come up with the following year, if it's the same.
Yeah, but can't say it's a rotation, because each year is based on, on the solid.
I'll make a second, Judge.
I have a second. Commissioner Pargas. Discussion on that motion.
Okay, so my question is, I'd like us to consider, I know we have a motion before, but I don't know why we can't handle this like we do records, where instead of picking one or the other, we don't just rotate off back and forth during the business here.
That's not a viable situation, or called a circumstance, or needing the need for a morgue, autopsy, the thing.
Right. So the state wants to know what destination.
It's not, I'd opponent, like the record rotation where they pull a ball out, and no, it's not.
Right. So it's not just the pickup, but it's the storage and all that, okay?
Yeah. They have to know about the autopsy.
Thought is that you make one on the other, and then consider situation again next year.
And they're both good companies, both, and I just want to say that.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number, a bid for rental property at 83 and 350, we received one bid from River Real Resorts. They're going to pay $1,100 a year for the right to rent that property.
I make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bates. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item number nine, and that's considering act upon addendum to the LGS contract for district park services. Alice, you want to outline that?
Yeah, so this is a fairly mundane thing to do when we add a new staff person to one of the offices, the district department, and it's still a position that now we continue our lives. It comes out as a budget, and I recommend it more appropriately than.
You have the explanation and recommendation. Is your motion to approve?
I'm making a motion.
Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pargas, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10 is considering act upon interlocal agreements for medical examiner services. Currently, the county is utilizing Central Texas Autopsies and Lockheart for autopsies from time to time. Results of the autopsies are delayed, the cause amount of work that Central Texas is experiencing. So therefore, is recommending that we, recommended that we enter into the interlocal agreements with Travis County and with forensic labs of South Texas, just to allow for two other options for whenever we have a need for an autopsy. It's not, again, it's not a matter of not liking the work that Central Texas does, it's just a matter, sometimes they're overwhelmed, and they, we have to wait. So this is just another option for our JPs to order autopsies.
Is the fee going to be about this, pretty close to the same?
Pretty much the same, within the couple hundred dollars of each other.
Okay.
How much is budgeted for that, Judge? Do you know how much?
Yeah. You'll be shocked. Let me tell you.
It's $4,085.
$4,500.
Okay.
And that's just a.
I think that's what fool I thought.
Each charity has an individual line item budgeted, and I come to this board, we have to have 60, because that's 50, because by all accounts, we have to pay $5,000.
And regardless of whether they have, if they run over the line item or not, county's obligated to make that payment. It's really an item that, we're going to have to pay regardless. $4,000, $4,500 per autopsy.
I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bates, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11 is considering act upon road administration report. De.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is from September the 19th to October the 9th. Done what we usually do. We bladed roads, we're passing potholes on paved roads, and we're mulching brush. We moved equipment from County Road 328, 336, Uvalde Estates and Utahki Yard to the county yard here in town. Equipment was also moved, County Road 111 to 421, County Road 340 to 310, County Road 305 to 201. We've been doing quite a bit of maintenance repairs, because, you know, we got, if you use it, you're going to have to work on it. So we were looking at a leak in the track loader, and while we were under there, found out that two of the roller bearings were out, so we had to order rollers for it. And that took about three weeks for them to come in. They're not right on the spot. On that, one of the single-wheel rollers, we're going to have to put new isolators on it. The isolators are the, on the front wheel, they're rubber, and when it's vibrating, that way it doesn't vibrate the rest of the tractor. And they're cracking up. Had them ordered for two, three weeks now, and they haven't showed up yet. Double drum, we're going to be using it here in the near future. We're replacing the drum scrapers on it, so when we go over and we're doing a laydown, we can actually do it all nice and smooth. One of the maintainers lost an engine, spun out the bearings. And then our shredders, we're replacing the stump jumper. It's that big disc underneath the shredder, so when it hits a stump, it'll actually jump up over. And we're also got the brush truck two, our steering gearbox. We ordered one, it showed up. It was the wrong one, because they had two different ones for that truck. So we sent it back, and we got another one coming, and it hadn't showed up yet, so we can get it out, probably because they've had quite a few fires here. Monitor and supervise all the work. Any questions?
You got any good news?
It hadn't ranked yet. Any questions, indeed?
Cost of material still creeping up?
It's going up, I think.
Wow.
The oil's getting higher. Mainly the oil is not so much the, the pop.
Oil.
Oil jumping quite a bit.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and accept Dee's report.
Motion by Commissioner Bates to accept the report. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider item 12, considering act upon line item budget amendments. We have none this morning. Item number 13 is considering act upon approval of monthly reports.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Bates to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14 is considering act upon payment of bills.
I'll make a motion. We pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Garza, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 15 is considering act upon resolutions and proclamations. As we close today, I'd like to do so in memory of Jason Alizondo, Tefarino O. Gonzalez, L.A. Malicek, Rachel Garcia, Charles Henry Buddy Norman, Ronald R. Rushing, Cressman L. Science Jr. Any others? If not, that concludes this agenda, and this meeting stands adjourned. Thank y'all for being here.
Take care, yourself.
I'll be there. 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 I'll be there.